Good morning and welcome, everyone. This being the day and hour fixed by the Act of Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter for the Organization of the Council of the City of Pittsburgh, the 143rd Council will be in order. Before proceeding, I would like to call on Councilman Lavelle and Councilperson Strasburger to please escort Mayor Ed Ganim into the chamber. Please rise and remain standing for the presentation of the flags, the Pledge of Allegiance, the singing of the National Anthem, and the invocation. The flags will be presented by the ROTC cadets of the Three Rivers Battalion at the University of Pittsburgh. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilman-elect Kohari Mosley's son, Isaiah Mosley. Isaiah is 11 years old and a sixth grader at Sacred Heart. We will now have the singing of the National Anthem led by Ms. Boston Waters, who is a sixth grader at Pittsburgh Kappa 6 through 12. Thank you. Please be seated. The first order of business will be the presentation of the certificates of election by council district to be read by Assistant City Clerk Ashley Robinson.
Bill Number One, Certificate of Election from the Return Board of the County of Allegheny does hereby certify that the election held on the seventh day of November 2023, Bobby Wilson, having received 7,347 votes, was duly elected to the office of Member of Pittsburgh City Council District One to a term of four years. Bill Number Two, Certificate of Election from the Return Board of the County of Allegheny does hereby certify that the election held on the seventh day of November 2023, Robert Charlin III, having received 5,389 votes, was duly elected to the office of Member of Pittsburgh City Council District Three to a term of four years. Bill Number Three, Certificate of Election from the Return Board of the County of Allegheny does hereby certify that the election held on the seventh day of November 2023, Barbara Greenwood Warwick, having received 9,270 votes, was duly elected to the office of Member of Pittsburgh City Council District Five to a term of four years. Bill Number Four, Certificate of Election from the Return Board of the County of Allegheny does hereby certify that the election held on the seventh day of November 2023, Deborah L. Gross, having received 9,033 votes, was duly elected to the office of Member of Pittsburgh City Council District Seven to a term of four years. And Bill Number Five, Certificate of Election from the Return Board of the County of Allegheny does hereby certify that the election held on the seventh day of November 2023, Kohari Mosley, having received 8,709 votes, was duly elected to the office of Member of Pittsburgh City Council District Nine to a term of four years.
The invocation will be offered by Reverend Dr. John C. Welch, Senior Pastor from the Six Mile Zion Missionary Baptist Church.
Let us pray. Loving God, we invite you into this sacred hall of governance as we install unto public service those whom the public have elected by the will of democracy. We ask God that henceforth that they be guided by you, governed by the pillars of jurisprudence, protected against unnecessary political scrutiny. May they and we, as your people, align with your ultimate will for civility as we live in this city and in this Commonwealth, in the name of the one who created us, the one who redeemed us, and the one who sustains us. Amen.
We will now have the official oaths of office. Once the oath is completed, the member will make brief remarks. With this this morning, we are honored to have the Honorable Leah Williams Duncan, Allegheny County Magisterial District Judge, who will administer the oath of office to Mr. Bobby Wilson from Council District One. If Councilman Wilson and his family will please come up front.
Councilman Wilson, as a member of District One, it is my honor and my pleasure to stand here with you today. He does, yes, he does. I've been watching you for years, and I know your heart for the residents of District One as the entire city. And again, it is my honor and my pleasure to stand here with you today for your third?
Second.
Second term. Maybe that's prophetic, I don't know. Please raise your right hand. Please repeat after me. I, Bobby Wilson?
I, Bobby Wilson.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this Commonwealth?
And of this Commonwealth.
And the Charter of this city?
And the Charter of this city.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of this office?
The duties of this office.
To the best of my ability?
The best of my ability.
Thank you. I'm going to have you sign.
I do.
Thank you. Congratulations.
All right, second to start this off. Good morning, everyone. I'm glad we made it in here. You know, my first remarks are to say congratulations to our new city council members, Kohari Mosley and Bob Charlin. I was told to keep it brief, so I got to speed up a little bit. But in the light of a joke that I tried to make, I want to say that I think these two at least try to get a little bit of my jar of humor, so I'm looking forward to it. With that said, I'm excited to start my second term as councilman for District One. Thank you to all my supporters, my contributors, the unions, my campaign staff, and my staff here at City Council. I have to say that my staff here, you know, they put in a lot of work, and I appreciate everything they do. They're very selfless individuals, and every day they come to work and do the job for the people, and for me, and for that, I thank them. Thank you to the community groups and leaders of the North Side, the Strip District, and downtown neighborhoods, whom I look forward to working with for the next four years. And most importantly, thank you to my family. I want to thank my wife for always being there for me, my children, Riley, Chester, and Isaac. Don't want to forget Isaac. And I also want to thank my father for always being there for me. My dad, Bob Wilson Buzz, you know, people know him as Buzz, some of you in here. Also, my mom, I want to thank my mom for always being there for me, my sister who's here, my older sister, who put the makeup. Want to thank my in-laws, Bill and Joan Painter, for always being there for us and our family. Thank you for everything you do. Finally, thank you to Judge Liam Duncan for providing over this ceremony, and thank you to Clerk Kim Clerk Baskin and your team for preparing today. Chambers look fantastic. Also, thank the Sergeant of Arms for everything you do for this chamber and council in the city of Pittsburgh. In my first four years of council, as a councilman, I'm proud that we brought back $38.4 million to the North Side. These millions of dollars went towards paving roads, redesigning streets, installing speed humps, fixing landslides, repairing city steps, constructing and repairing city bridges, building playgrounds, lighting ball fields, improving our parks. On behalf of the North Side, I thank the great partners I've had here to make that happen at City Council and in the mayor's office, who have worked closely to improve District One. During my first time with, you know, with the support of my fellow council members, during my first term, I passed 61 resolutions and ordinances. I am especially proud of having passed legislation to create rental registry here in Pittsburgh, forgive $115 million of bad medical debt, protect reproductive freedoms here in the city of Pittsburgh, extend paid sick leave during the coronavirus pandemic, and establish outdoor dining standards in the aftermath of the pandemic. But the work of a councilman is more than just allocating money and passing bills. Sometimes it turns into a good idea, sometimes it's turning a good idea into reality. Sometimes, you know, it's things like the land bank, who for a long time, we heard that it wasn't working, and, you know, the goal of it was to take control of deteriorating homes across the city and put them on the path to new ownership. So with 13,000 abandoned properties in the city's hands currently, getting the land bank working was critical. So I'm excited that we have nearly 50 properties coming to the market right now for community groups and private owners. That was in less than a year. Before that, for the past eight, nine years, it was only one. In 2024, the land bank will try to take on 68 lots and 32 structures. As a land bank board member, I look forward to championing the reuse of these 100 properties and tackle blind our neighborhoods, so that low-income and working families can have a chance at a new homeownership. Other times, working as a councilman is a good, you know, it's just a matter of keeping a good thing going. It's not, you know, more simple than that. When I found out, you know, through my own kids, that Dolly Portman's Imagination Library was ending, I had to find a way to keep it going. The program may host children from birth to the age of five through the age of five, a new book every month, carefully selected for them, and there is no cost or obligation to the families of these children. So in partnership with Mayor Ed Ganim, the Benzer Foundation, the Mary Hillman Jennings Foundation, Reading Ready Pittsburgh, and LeAnn Wilson here at City Council, I appreciate everything you've done to make sure this program gets back on its feet. Since the relaunch in August, we had added 700 Pittsburgh children to the program. Today, we have over 4,100 kids signed up to get a book each month, and we'll send nearly 50,000 books to Pittsburgh children this year. I have to thank the councilwoman, Madam Teresa Cal Smith, for making sure that this program was front and center, that kept the council...
Teresa!
I appreciate everything you've done to make sure that this program was back on its feet. Now, as I look forward to my second term in office, let me note that my district has grown significantly. Today, I represent neighborhoods across Allegheny River, a significant portion of downtown Pittsburgh and the entire Strip District. The growth of my district and the entire, I'm sorry, the growth of my district has brought me into conversations about issues that affect the entire city, not just the North Side. I'm eager to help in all efforts to make sure that stabilized and that downtown Pittsburgh commercial office market is revitalized and make sure that it thrives. I don't want to look back five years from now and thinking that we could have done something and we could have do it now. We need to act on this front because we cannot afford to lose the large tax revenues generated by this vital economic engine of the city and this region. Also, I look forward to spearheading necessary and urgent reforms we must make to make sure our city zoning code is working so that we can build more houses and more affordable housing in Pittsburgh. We need to make sure our own laws are not getting in the way of that. I look forward to all the work in my second term, and thank you all for being here.
Next, we are honored to have with us the Honorable Nina Ricardi, Allegheny County Magisterial District Judge, who will administer the oath of office to Robert Charlin III from Council District Three. Can Mr. Charlin and his family please come forward?
And to repeat after me, I, Robert Charlin III?
I, Robert Charlin III.
Do solemnly affirm?
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this Commonwealth?
And of this Commonwealth.
And the Charter of the City of Pittsburgh?
And the Charter of the City of Pittsburgh.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duty of my office with fidelity.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duty of my office with fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. Congratulations.
All right. Thank you, Judge Ricardi. We have a rule here in the Third Council District that Judge Ricardi always swears us in, regardless of who the Judge Ricardi is. They've always been there for us, so thank you very much. Congratulations to you as well, and I look forward to working with you in your future endeavors here. I want to start off by apologizing to any frequent observers of Pittsburgh City Council. Any parents in the audience will understand this. If you have a student who is a good student in class but happens to sit next to the bad kid and get in trouble, according to the alphabetical order, I'm next to Anthony Cago. I was a good student, my mom's here, you can ask her. So if I can start off, I'd like to give a couple of thank yous to my family. Thank you so much for instilling in me a sense of service and community. I wouldn't be here without that. We all do a little better when we all pitch in. To my wife Cassidy, thank you so much, I wouldn't be here without you. To my partners in co-governance, a new generation of leaders in South Pittsburgh, Judge Ricardi, County Councilman Bonnerati, Director Jordan Pietrowski, Representative Abney, and my dear friend and closest ally, Representative Jessica Banham, all under 35, I want to make sure you guys know I've got your back, just like you've always had mine. As another young leader once said, "We are the change that we seek." To this council, thank you so much for your support over the last year, specifically during this transition, and I ask for your grace as I come in spitting vinegar like many of you once did. I hope this usher is in a new era of Pittsburgh City Council where we can stand on our own and claim our own authority. To Viola, Kate, and the campaign, Donna, Sue, Arlene, Joyce, and Alicia in the office, and to the clerk's office, as former staff, I want to thank you for your hard work, and I will always uplift staff. Thank you so much, we wouldn't be here without you. To the members that came before me. To members that came before me, Councilman Ricardi, Cook, and my mentor, dear friend, and hair aspiration, Councilman Kraus. Thank you for your guidance over all these years. Thank you for paving a way for me and South Pittsburgh, and thank you in advance for taking my phone calls late at night when I need advice from a District Three council expert, advice that only that you can give, even though I know you all desperately want to be retired. So briefly, I'd like to give a quick tale of why I'm here. I promise this will make sense, but you'll have to go back with me to the late '90s. Three Rivers Stadium, and in 1998, the Pirates are going to lose 93 games this season. And during this time, baseball is starting to lose popularity, starting to lose popularity to sports like basketball and football. And then comes two players, Mark McGuire and Sammy Sosa, and they start ripping the cover off the ball, and baseball starts to gain popularity again. And baseball executives have an important question that they need to answer. Do we want to crack down on steroids, or do we want to look like we're cracking down on steroids? And I think that's the same question that we have here in Pittsburgh. Do we want to explore policies that actually make this a more livable city, or do we want to just look like we are? Do we want to build trust in our police department, or do we want to villainize every officer who wears a uniform? Do we want to extract as much as we possibly can from every developer who comes through the city? Or do we want housing to be more affordable? Do we want to draw as much blood from the local nonprofits, or do we want to have their tax dollars to help budget our balance, or balance our budgets, fund our programs, and treat their workers fairly? We have big problems here in Pittsburgh. Our budget is held together by a thread, the city is dirty, and it's never been harder to own a home than it is right now. But I'm optimistic, and I still believe that we can do great things in Pittsburgh. Great things like businesses opening up on East Carson Street. Great things like a dozen vacant properties moving through the land bank in Knoxville. Great things like major traffic calming projects happening in Mount Washington. I'd like to remind the leaders in this room that rarely are leaders remembered for the projects they kill or developments that are stalled on their watch. The Pittsburgh Renaissance wasn't a time of great economic stagnation. I'd also like to remind us all that the seats that we occupy aren't ours. They merely have the great, we merely have the great fortune of resting our butts in them for a short while. And with that, I'd like to give one last thank you to the residents of District Three. I don't know if I'm going to nail this, but I know I'm going to try really damn hard. This isn't about me, it's about us. Something I very much agree with Mayor Ganim on is that if you want to hear a politician lie, count the amount of times they say "I." We have a lot of work to do. I want to thank you all for this opportunity, and as Councilman Wilson said four years ago, "Let's get to work."
Next, we are honored to have with us the Honorable James Hanley, Allegheny County Magisterial District Judge, who will administer the oath of office to Barbara Warwick from Council District Number Five.
On behalf of District Five, I want to thank you for your hard work. You are, and I mean this the nicest way, all over the place. Someone in the district that you and your staff are not involved in. So again, thank you. With that, would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Barbara Greenwood Warwick?
I, Barbara Greenwood Warwick.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support?
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States?
And this state?
And this state?
And the Charter of the City of Pittsburgh?
And the Charter of the City of Pittsburgh?
That I will faithfully discharge?
That I will faithfully discharge?
The duties of this office?
The duties of this office?
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability?
So help me God?
So help me God?
Congratulations. Good job.
Hey, everyone. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you all so much for coming, especially of those, those of you who've come out twice now. I know my kids were like, "What? Didn't we just do this?" So, and it's true. This first year has flown by. And when I think about all the love and kindness that has been shown to me so far, it just makes my heart burst. Well, first of all, because, and I didn't, I forgot them, so I had to scratch it in with my pen. I want to thank my family. And I want to thank them for being the ones so I can just be like, "Yeah, they're fine." I really appreciate it. And I love you. So, first off, or second off, I'd like to thank my campaign team. Molly Rohr and Cynthia Sorato. Yeah. And, and all the volunteers and donors. You know, campaigning when you're already in office is definitely next level. And, and I would not be here without you, so. Next, I want to congratulate our newest council members. Kahari Mosley, it has been so lovely getting to know you on the campaign trail. Your spirit and warmth always make me smile. And I'm glad that we get to work together. And Bob Charlin. I have been coming to you for help and advice since day one. You are always in the office early, you always leave late. You know your stuff, and you work really hard. And it's good to finally have you up here at the table. As for the rest of us on council, I want to say just a little bit about what a badass team I think we are. In this one year since I've been here, I have watched Deb Gross win millions for food justice and see through a plan that uses parking fees to make our streets safer for bikes and pedestrians. I have seen Bobby Wilson fight to relieve Pittsburgh families of crushing medical debt, get city workers free bike share, and introduce zoning changes that make it easier to open a childcare business. Anthony Coghill has consistently stood by city workers in advocating for the buildup of our fleets while also pushing hard for better contracts that have saved Pittsburgh taxpayers millions. Erica Strasburger is making this city cleaner and greener with her plastic bag ban. And she also legislated new housing protections for renters who are struggling to free themselves from domestic violence. Daniel Lavelle worked closely with the administration and the URA to realize his innovative vision for how the city can make its own long-term investment in the affordable housing that we so desperately need. And Teresa Kale Smith, you have overseen it all as our fearless council president. You have, you have opened your door, you have guided us, and you always make sure that every "i" is dotted and every "t" is crossed. Thank you. Now I want to turn to the people who keep our city running every day. Never, in all my years in the public sector, have I ever worked at a place where people are so dedicated and care so deeply about doing things right as you do here at the City of Pittsburgh. From the administration to our amazing directors and everyone down the line, this year, I have seen you build new playgrounds, improve our parks and ballfields, staff our pools, expand services for seniors, put on incredible events, care for our unhoused, respond to tens of thousands of emergency calls, clean up and tear down vacant properties, plant new trees, patch and pave our roads, and make our streets safer with traffic calming and speed enforcement to curb aggressive and distracted driving, which, in my opinion, and you're going to hear me say this a lot, after drugs and guns is the, does the most damage to our quality of life and poses the most serious threat to the health and safety of our kids. And yet, no matter how hard we work, we cannot do everything. And we don't always get things perfectly right. This is why we need the people. The community groups, the coaches, the mentors, the caregivers, the business owners, the activists, the 3-1-1 callers. Jameson, I don't know if you're here, but we appreciate you. So, I want to say thank you to the Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition, to the Greenfield Community Association, the Hazelwood Initiative, Center of Life, Poor Law, GH Cared, and the GHCC. To the Thirty-First Ward Community Action Group and Mount Rise Baptist Church. To the Hazelwood Cobras and Greenfield Baseball and McBride Hockey. And all the other sports organizations and churches and synagogues and PTOs and neighborhood groups who dedicate their lives to making District Five a better place to live. And thank you to the advocates like Fair Housing Partnership, Our Streets Collective, the Food Policy Council, Pittsburgh Human Rights Alliance, Hugh Lane Wellness, Transuniting, CoTrek, Reach, Bike PGHs, Pittsburghers for Public Transit, and so many others. Please, never stop coming to testify. Never stop calling with good ideas for good legislation because we need you. We need you and your expertise as we figure out how to grow and connect this city and make it livable for everyone, not just people making a hundred K plus a year. And finally, I want to thank my team. Laura Byko, Dan Brown, Clara Wyble, Maddie Bruce. It's one thing for me to stand up here as the elected official, but you are the ones who answer the calls, solve the problems, organize the meetings, send out the communications. You are the ones behind the scenes who give me good advice and who crafted the legislation to protect our parks, recognize indigenous people, and make sure Pittsburgh continues to be a safe place to seek gender-affirming care. So, yes. It has been an incredible year. The best year of my life. And now we are here with this incredible city council, our outstanding mayor, Ed Ganey. Our new city comptroller, Rachel Heitzler. You guys, she is great. She is great. And on top of that, we have our new county executive, Sarah Namorato, who I know, who I know is committed to collaboration between city and county that will help us all do better and uplift the entire Pittsburgh region. You guys, it is going to be an exciting four years. And I am just so honored and grateful that you have given me the chance to be a part of it all. Thank you.
Next, we are honored to have with us the Honorable Kate Lovelace, Allegany County Magisterial District Judge, who will administer the oath of office to Deborah L. Gross from Council District Seven.
I just want to say before I start that it's really an honor that you asked me to be here. I'm so pleased. I know that you started in a special election, but this is your third full term sworn in, your second decade. I get to live in your district, so you are a neighbor, a friend. And like you, I get to represent this city and our personal district. So it's awesome to have gotten to know you this year. It's really an honor and... I, Deborah L. Gross,
I, Deborah L. Gross,
do solemnly swear,
do solemnly swear,
that I will support the Constitution,
that I will support the Constitution,
of the United States,
of the United States,
and of this commonwealth,
and of this commonwealth,
and the Charter of the City of Pittsburgh,
and the Charter of the City of Pittsburgh,
and that I will faithfully discharge,
and that I will faithfully discharge,
the duties of this office,
the duties of this office,
to the best of my ability,
to the best of my ability,
so help me God,
so help me God.
Hi, everybody. I'm so glad to see all your faces. I hadn't seen everybody that was out there yet. It's so great to see you all. And a thank you to Judge Lovelace and to Superintendent Talia Farrow. I mean, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. School Board Member Talia Farrow. I just, sorry, just gave you a different position. And I want to note that Judge Lovelace is our new magistrate in District Seven. It's nice, we have a female magistrate. Council, School Board Member Talia Farrow is also my school board member. And I also have a new state rep, Latasha Mays, who is also, so we have an all-female quadrant. As well, of course, as our new woman county executive, Sarah Namorato. So we're really, really pleased. And this is an alignment that is, is really, I think, welcome. So thank you also to the residents of District Seven. This is the fourth time I've been elected to this office. The first time I ran was in a special election. I completed the term of Councilman Patrick Dowd. So this is my third full term, and it's really an honor. This is, and as Judge Lovelace said, the second decade. I've been here a full ten years as of today. And looking forward to another four. And as always, thank you to all of the volunteers on my campaign. A special shout out to the superstar campaign manager, Molly, who's here in the audience. I don't see you, Molly, where are you? Yay, there you are, there you are. Who managed three campaigns at one time, right? So we, I had a third of her, and she knocked it out of the park. So I appreciate you so much, Molly. And of course, to all of the volunteers, all of those people who go out. It's always so freezing cold when you have to circulate your petition signatures, right? It's February, nobody really wants to go outside. They all come out. I think we submitted something like five hundred signatures. And it was really wonderful to, to see all of that energy. And I really, I really, really appreciate it. And to the volunteers, I know there are a couple of people, I hope I can't see them in the audience. I think Danielle is here, I think Kirsten is here. I'm not sure else, hey, over there in the corner. There you are, hi. So thank you, thank you so much for, for showing up over and over and over again. Some people on campaigns like this will come out every week, every time you ask to go knock on doors, to make those phone calls. And it's, it makes all of the difference. We appreciate you so much. And I also want to say thank you, as several council members pointed out. Thank you to the staff in District Seven Official Office, to James, Jill, Kelsey, Nathan. When we're do, when, as elected, we're doing two full-time jobs. You know, they're really picking up the slack, right? So when you're on the campaign trail, there's a lot of times you're not in the office. And they're there, they're leading, and they're making decisions, and they're carrying on the business of the district without you. So, we really appreciate that. I rewatched the speech from four years ago. It was January, I think, sixth, 2020. And I mentioned things in my speech like working on equity in housing, in childcare, food justice, transportation and mobility, and utilities. And I'm kind of a broken record. That's exactly what we talked about in my district on this last campaign and what my colleagues have been hearing me talk about over and over and over at the council table. But I want us to all acknowledge that we're making progress on these things, right? Not only have we spent millions and millions of dollars citywide, I think probably in excess of two hundred million dollars on affordable housing from big projects in other districts, but also in passing legislation, like the inclusionary zoning legislation that started in Lawrenceville, but we expanded this term into Bloomfield and Polish Hill, and some went into Oakland as well. In my district, between those affordable housing investments and the inclusionary zoning, that's three hundred new affordable apartments that weren't there before. And that really makes a difference, right? And we're going to have to fight against that because the market is pulling us the other way. Four years ago, I talked about how we have kind of two opposite market forces in this city. We have neighborhoods and markets where there's disinvestment, and there's blight, and there's abandonment. And then we have the other extreme, especially in the district that I represent, of hyper-investment and displacement and gentrification. And as a council, we're trying to craft policies for two opposite effects, right? And that's really challenging. So I really appreciate all members kind of putting, really understanding that, you know, one district might need this solution, but other parts of the city need the opposite. But that's our rightful role. We've talked about that as council members, that we are here, I believe, that local government should be working to moderate those two market extremes, right? And so that's what, that's what we continue to try to make progress on. But thankfully, we have you to work with, and we have so many great community partners to help us figure this out. It's really not what we've been accustomed to for decades, right? And now we really have to work on that. And so we've done things like, again, working on these things that we know are the cost burdens of our poorest households. If we can make parks on them, we make life better for all Pittsburghers, right? This council has made investments in childcare. One of the first things, the Women's, First Women's Caucus did, I think it was back in 2016, 2017, right, was set aside two million dollars to invest in helping Pittsburgh families with childcare and investing in those childcare businesses so that we have, they don't go out of business and they can pay their, their workers. And that money really sat around. And so I want to give a shout out to Mayor Ganey because that money has all moved. Over two and a half million dollars has moved since the beginning of the pandemic. And it helped something like thirty childcare centers stay in business, expand, raise their wages, and serve more kids. And that's exactly what we need to, we need to do more of that, right? We know that across, and by the way, since the beginning of the pandemic, across the state of Pennsylvania, fifty thousand childcare seats went out of business. And in the City of Pittsburgh, under Mayor Ganey, they expanded. So we're going to, let's do more of that. We also know that, again, it, so we, we all got sworn in on January, I think, sixth, 2020. And it was like twelve weeks later that we went into lockdown. And I think the first thing we did, I worked with Councilwoman Kale Smith to work on food justice. And how do we, how do we help food security? We passed a resolution asking the administration to explore looking at city-owned property and what could be used for urban ag? And could we do deed restrictions on it? And again, we did the first ones this year, under Mayor Ganey. So the land bank, and working with the land bank who identified city parcels that were transferred to those people who were stewarding those community gardens and then making sure that that property stayed community garden. And those protections weren't there before. Working with Councilwoman Smith, we also explored limited equity housing co-ops. I think working with, I forgot who the co-sponsor was, on exploring the densification for accessory dwelling units with, if you don't know, that's like backyard housing and adding apartments on your property. Because we know that every single thing we can do to increase the availability of housing is, helps bring, you know, bring us affordability. But also, in this crazy United States right now, we also really have to pay attention to ownership and how we get the next generation into ownership because we're losing homeownership. And we have aggressive private equity companies gabbling up housing all over, all over the country, including in the City of Pittsburgh. So I don't want to go on and on and on. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So as other members have pointed out, we've worked together to also expand and create a food justice fund so we continue those investments in our local food system. That's local jobs, that's local businesses, and it's local food. It's healthier food for all of us. And I also want to thank, again, just recently, we've also worked on increasing wages for our own city employees. And again, I want to give Councilwoman Smith and Mayor Ganey a shout out here for increasing wages for our lifeguards, and our Parks and Recs employees, so that we can actually have those employees and have those, those benefits. So we keep working on these things. Sometimes it seems like progress is slow, because you know what? It is. But we will keep working on it, and we're going to keep making the city a more just city and a more equitable city. I appreciate you all. Thank you.
And lastly, we are honored to have with us the Honorable Chelsa Wagner, Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas, who will administer the oath of office to Kahari Mosley from Council District Number Nine.
So as our family assembles here, let me just say how proud I am, how proud we all are of my better half, Kahari Mosley. And we're just really elated to share all of his intelligence, his heart, and his passion for the residents of District Nine and the whole city. So raise your right hand. I, Kahari Mosley,
I, Kahari Mosley.
Do solemnly swear,
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States,
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth,
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of City Councilor,
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of City Councilor.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
All these people here today, y'all must have thought I bought selective with me. That's tonight. I want to thank everyone so much for coming out. I want to thank the city clerk, Kim. I've known you since IUP days. You do a great job. Can we give her a round of applause for this, for putting all this together? I want to thank the mayor. I want to thank all the elected officials here, all the dignitaries, the Friends of Labor, all those who are gathered here for this momentous occasion. Thank you to my new colleagues on council for the warm welcome you've given me over the last several months. Thank you for your insight, your advice, and your enthusiasm about me joining this body. To join this body is truly the honor of my life, and I look forward to working with you for all the people across the city of Pittsburgh. Thank you to the voters of District Nine for believing in me. Thank you to everyone who donated, volunteered, and endorsed our campaign over the last year. Thank you to everyone who worked on behalf of my campaign team, my honorary campaign chairman Reverend Welch, Brandy Fisher, my campaign manager, Tracy Wright, my treasurer, and Erin Woz, my finance director. I am eternally grateful for your amazing efforts. Thank you to my incoming staff, Grace, Leslie in Stanford, for agreeing to join me on this journey. I'd also like to acknowledge my family, the Mosleys. The Reeds that are in the house. There's always a lot of Reeds. Whenever, whenever the Reeds show up, like, we're like the Wu-Tang Clan. As well as the Wagners that are in the house tonight. As well as my uncle, former council president Jack Wagner. I'd also like to thank my sons, Thaddeus and Isaiah. And also my wonderful wife, the Honorable Judge Chelsa Wagner. And I'd be remiss if I didn't give a shout out to my One Hood family. And before I give my formal remarks, I would like to acknowledge the memory of my dearly departed mother, Yvonne Reed Mosley. So, so for the last year, I've been talking a lot about the idea of transformation, emphasizing the ability that we have to positively transform lives if we dare to be bold, think big, and rise up above cynicism, above division, above pessimism, above intimidation, above retribution, above coercion, above provincialism, above self-absorption, above opportunism, above negativity, above vindictiveness, and above the myopia that has plagued our politics. I've stressed our need to rediscover the transformational, creative, innovative, and entrepreneurial spirit that has defined this city since the 19th century. I've shined a spotlight on this great choice we have between aspiring to be transformational leaders, citizens and advocates, or conceding to the tried and untrue transactional politicking that has stood in the way of meaningful progress for far too long. I believe our city is experiencing a transformational moment, and our generation has been tasked with the responsibility to seize a once-in-a-century opportunity and lay the foundation for Pittsburgh that embodies the type of prosperity, vibrancy, and diversity that epitomizes our progressive values. And if we can do that, we can make this city a place we can be proud to call home for generations to come. I call this our transformational moment. Today, I submit to you, my friends, we are in the midst of a transformation that provides us the opportunity to build a more prosperous, resilient, and equitable Pittsburgh. This is our transformational opportunity, and we have an obligation to each other, to those who came before us, and to future generations to answer this call to build a prosperous Pittsburgh that encourages shared economic growth, provides economic security for the most vulnerable, and creates economic opportunities regardless of your zip code, bloodline, or station in life. We must answer the call to build a resilient Pittsburgh on the foundation of a sustainable infrastructure network, accessible multimodal transportation system, and reliable critical services to mitigate the challenges of climate change, make our communities more interconnected, and respond expeditiously to unexpected disaster. We must answer the call to build an equitable Pittsburgh by intentionally focusing on inclusion, structural equity, and celebrating our city's rich diversity to foster a sense of shared belonging, solve our common challenges through diverse perspectives, and honor the numerous Pittsburghers who have contributed to our amazing cultural legacy. But before we begin, before we can seize our transformational opportunity, we must embrace our transformational potential. We have the potential to restore hope, uplift, and inspire each other to make good on the promise that Pittsburgh's best days are yet to come. We have the potential to embody the same excellence that introduced modern electricity to the world, created the first movie theater, invented the World Series, established the first commercial radio station, built the first Jeep automobile, discovered the vaccine for polio, and started the first emergency medical service. Now I can name countless other significant achievements that Pittsburghers have made from now until the next time my beloved Pirates win the World Series. But it's time for us to put pen to paper and write our chapter in the annals of Pittsburgh excellence to inspire the coming generations who will stand on our shoulders when the time comes for us to join the ancestors. Seizing our transformational opportunity, maximizing our transformational potential, and meeting our transformational moment demands that we are transformative leaders who have authenticity, exhibit creativity, strive to be inspirational, solve problems proactively, and proudly walk in our purpose. These are the qualities we must embody to deliver principled, innovative, and cooperative governance to the people we serve. South African author Giff Gugu Mona says, "Transformational leadership is a deliberate action taken in response to a vow made to transform people's lives." As transformational leaders, we must take action to govern openly, work cooperatively, and deliver essential services effectively to earn the public's trust and confidence. I feel compelled to note that as important as good governance, strategic policy, and good, consistent city services are, we cannot overlook the role that culture plays in our transformational journey to ensure our city becomes the best possible version of itself. And with that, I want to give a shout out to my dad, Thaddeus Mosley, the great sculptor. We must encourage a transformational cultural renaissance across this city. We need to intentionally chronicle, celebrate, and educate our citizens about this city's rich legacy. Pittsburgh's contributions in philanthropy, art, music, cuisine, sports, and popular culture rivals any American city and surely dwarfs any city of our size. Our city's role in the development of early American music, to hosting North America's oldest and longest-running biennial art exhibition, to being the cradle of immortal jazz artists like Billy Exton and Mary Lou Williams, or legendary hip-hop artists like Wiz Khalifa and Mac Miller. Our city has been a mecca for arts and culture for nearly two centuries. I believe we have a vested interest in making this cultural legacy common knowledge for Pittsburghers of all walks of life as a source of pride and inspiration citywide. As we celebrate our glorious past, let us promote, invest in, and support the development of today's local artists, space makers, curators, and cultural influencers. Our best and brightest should not have to leave our city to follow their dreams, master their craft, or advance their artistic endeavors. By supporting our emerging, our emerging artists, we are not only supporting homegrown talent, but we are also growing our regional economy and improving the quality of life for all of our residents by investing in a more vibrant, lively, and thriving cultural scene. In a city blessed by our rich cultural and ethnic traditions, leaning into making our city more diverse will make us more economically competitive, grow our population, and add to one of our city's greatest and most defining strengths. We can add to the phenomenal tapestry that is our cultural legacy and position us to better compete in a marketplace that becomes increasingly global by the day. With our city's future at stake, we must prioritize equitable, sustainable, and responsible development in our neighborhoods with a commitment to transformational economic growth. The type of growth that promotes safe neighborhoods, supports local industries, expands access to opportunities for all, and creates opportunities for those who have been left behind for far too long. To quote John Fitzgerald Kennedy, John Fitzgerald Kennedy in his 1960 inaugural speech, "If a free society cannot help the many who are poor, it cannot save the few who are rich." We have to ensure Pittsburghers of all income levels are part of our future by enacting policies that foster community wellness, expand affordable housing, empower neighborhoods in the planning process, invest in locally grown small businesses, and entrepreneurs that are creating jobs and diversifying our local economy. Pittsburgh can be a model for cities across the country seeking to improve their quality of life, preserve the profound and unique character of our neighborhoods without displacement or erasing the uniqueness that makes our hometown such an iconic American city. To complement our economic strategy, we need a modern transportation and infrastructure system that is fitting for a city with so many remarkable institutions, businesses, and cultural amenities in order to secure our future health and prosperity and to attain the world-class status we have the potential to achieve. Our economy can't achieve its full potential if we don't prepare and connect our workforce for the 21st century. This involves collaboration and alignment between economic development agencies, workforce training programs, and our rich educational institutions to strengthen pathways to careers. A comprehensive and strategic approach will solidify and propel our region's competitiveness for decades to come. Now, to accomplish all these things I've outlined, they will not occur unless we answer what I think is the most important call to action. This is the call to embrace our transformational requirement. Now, this requirement hadn't dawned on me until one Sunday morning during the primary. I went to Sunday worship service at Baptist Temple on Ray Street. And it just so happened that Reverend Rodney Lott's sermon that day was about transformation. And I'd already been talking about transformation a lot up to that point. But it was one of those days when you're sitting in the pew, and you really feel like the sermon was specifically written for you. And the basis of what Reverend Lott had to say is, "We can't expect to transform our external surroundings until we are willing to go through our own transformation inside. For it is not possible to change lives and remain unchanged." To say this message at home is a tremendous understatement. After the service, we sat together in the church for about an hour talking about what I drew from the sermon and how much it moved me. Now, we all must accept that any transformation that has not yet occurred in our city is a direct reflection of the transformation that we've been willing to undergo individually and collectively. In my mind, this is the most important transformation we have to make to usher in the change we hope to see. We must accept that the world around us will not transform unless we make a transformation within ourselves and how we are in community with one another. So my question to you this morning is, are we willing to make the transformation required of us? Are we ready to make the transformation in our daily interactions? Are we prepared to accept the journey towards the best version of ourselves is the only thing standing in way of building the best version of this city? Because that's where the real work starts. Before we get to the community plan, the after-school program, or the brick-and-mortar projects, we must begin the transformation inside each and every one of us. So starting today, let's rise above the pettiness. Let's rise above the narcissism. Let's rise above the callousness. Let's rise above the bitterness. Let's rise above the entitlement. Let's rise above the apathy. Rise above the paranoia. Rise above the insecurity. Rise above the suspicion and begin the work necessary to transform ourselves and the city we love. When I began this journey over a year ago, I said I was going to lead with empathy, compassion, and grace. I didn't know at that time my chief of staff's name would literally be Grace. But I promise you, if you walk with me through the halls of power and the powerful boardrooms and the fancy office suites, I will walk with you through the community centers, the houses of worship, the neighborhood watering holes, and the streets of East Hills to East Liberty, from Friendship to Garfield, Highland Park to Homewood, Lomer to Lincoln Lemington, Park Place to Point Breeze, and Region Square to Staten Heights. And together, we will bring the change our citizens need, want, and deserve. But most importantly, we will answer our call and meet this transformational moment. Thank you.
Being that the newly elected and re-elected members of City Council have been duly sworn in, the Assistant City Clerk will now call the roll.
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Caucus.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Lavell.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Nine members present. Nine members present.
Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you the 143rd Council of the City of Pittsburgh. To all council members who will serve, I wish you all a very productive and blessed year, and I look forward to working with you all. Our next order of business is the nomination and election of the Council President. What is your pleasure?
Madam Clerk, I'd like to nominate R. Daniel Lavell.
Councilperson Teresa Kelsmith has nominated R. Daniel Lavell to be Council President. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? The nominations are now closed. For the Assistant City Clerk, Ashley Robinson, please call the roll on the election of R. Daniel Lavell as President of the Council of the City of Pittsburgh.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Lavell.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Sorry.
Aye.
I'm used to saying that. Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
With the unanimous vote of nine oh, Councilman R. Daniel Lavell has now been elected President of Pittsburgh City Council. Judge Wagner.
I, Robert Daniel Lavell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this Commonwealth.
And of this Commonwealth.
And the Charter of the City of Pittsburgh.
And the Charter of the City of Pittsburgh.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of this office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of this office.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Good morning, everyone. It still is the morning. Briefly, thank you. I've always said that in any situation, whether it's the captain of a basketball team or as we have been chosen to be elected officials, one of the greatest honors is for your peers to elect you and to ask you to be in leadership. And so I thank you for this. Please note that I do not take it lightly, that I will come here every day to serve you and serve alongside you to ensure that we indeed build the most equitable city possible and that the least of these become the best of these. So thank you. With that, I do want to acknowledge some dignitaries that I saw here earlier today that may still be here. If I miss anyone, please forgive me. In addition to our esteemed judges who are with us, I did see our County Controller, Corey O'Connor. I saw State Representative Jessica Bedham was here. County Council Bethany Hamhalem was here. Thank you. Senator Jay Costa was here. City Controller Michael Lamb. School Board Devin Teleferro. Our Controller-elect Rachel Heisler, who I believe gets sworn in later today. Congratulations. And then State Representative Latasha Mays. And our County Treasurer Erica Bruster was also here. And then lastly, I want to take a personal moment to acknowledge one final dignitary in the crowd, and that's Salaudine. There's two individuals in this room at this moment that Salaud took a chance on many years ago, and that's myself and the gentleman I walked in the door to meet, Kahari Mosley. In addition to us, there are many others who you have mentored over the years, and you can look no further than across the hallway, on this side of the hall, and around our city to see your legacy. So thank you, Salaudine. With that, I would like to bring up the Honorable Mayor, Ed Gany, to give some remarks.
Good morning, good morning, everybody. How you doing? We could do better than that. Good morning, Pittsburgh. How we doing? Yeah, that's better, that's better. Before I begin, I want to take a time to recognize two council people that will be leaving council for their hard work and dedication to helping to build a city. First one I want to acknowledge is someone that I think has done a tremendous job, in my belief, in helping to transform this city on so many different levels. And he's always been one that you can go to and get wisdom. I agree with you, Bob. He's always been the one that if I needed a conversation offline that could help us out, Bruce Kraus was that gentleman, without question. I'd like for Bruce Kraus to stand up. I'd like for Bruce to stand up. Can y'all give Bruce a round of applause? The next one that's outgoing, I don't see him here, but I definitely want to pay homage to him, is Council Reverend Ricky Burgess. And thank Councilman Ricky Burgess for his years of service on council. I know he may be watching, and I just want him to know that I appreciate him, and I appreciate the work that he's put in. Councilman Burgess, congratulations. I want to thank the new Council President. Where'd he go? I want to thank the new Council President. You definitely deserve it, and it just adds on to the legacy of your family and all that your family has done to transform this city. Your family is the definition of transformation, and I'm glad to be able to say, Councilman We have some icons in the audience. We got one, I always say if you want to know how long people have served in politics, you got to look at the south end of the city. Some of the greatest political dynasties come from the south end. I've learned that through the years as a state rep. And no one can be as strong as the Wagners, who have dominated the landscape of politics for some time. And I'd like for Jack Wagner to stand up, and I'd like for y'all to honor Jack Wagner. And I couldn't be here if it wasn't for him. My first campaign I ever worked on was a special election. I didn't know anything. I just said to this gentleman, "Just let me follow you around. Just let me see." And what he's meant to my family and me is something that's so personal, I can't even put it in words. But Daniel Lavell was correct. Salaudine is an icon in this city, an icon of what transformation really looks like, an icon of what it means to teach young individuals how to grow in this political season and grow up to be politicians. I would not be here if it wasn't for you, and I want to publicly honor you right now. Give Salaudine a round of applause. As I call your name, please stand. Bobby Wilson. Robert Sharland. Barbara Warwick. Deb Gross. Kahari Mosley. Listen, can we give this new council new winners a round of standing ovation? Can we stand up for them? Come on. Each and every one of us here has chosen a life of public service, and I want to welcome our members back that I've had the pleasure of working with over the past two years. It's good to see everybody, appreciate you. To our newest members, welcome. Thank you for your dedication, thank you for your hard work, thank you for making this city feel safe, welcoming, and thriving. That's what it's about, turning in our opportunities. And I want to make sure that we thank our families, I mean, thank their families, for I know how much and how difficult campaigning is, and you couldn't do it without a family. And so for everybody here whose family is here, can y'all, can the families just stand up for a minute? Can the families stand up for a minute? Let's honor and recognize the families. Yeah, come on. Over the past two years, we faced many challenges. Coming out of a pandemic, we've had to do a lot of different things, but we've got a lot accomplished just by working together in partnership. We've been able to face them head-on, and I believe nothing can overcome us working together to change this city. From reimagining how we utilize our rec centers, we did such a marvelous job, so that our kids and families have a safe place to play, learn, eat, and grow, to the variety of social services that will be coming to our rec centers, to making historic investments into the city's infrastructure, faster than ever working together to get the Fern Hollow Bridge up. We have faced challenges of rising violence, and our partnerships have helped yield results with a reduction in homicide size of 30%. We have seen new energy in our downtown with new businesses, restaurants selling out, and a number of our visitors coming every single year to our tourist events and having a great Our partnerships have resulted in making sure that our Department of Public Works crews have what they need to plow the snow, pick up garbage, and clean up our vacant lots. Coming in, we couldn't get an inch up, but because of the help of this council, this Saturday, we were able to get more than an inch up, and we couldn't have done that without you, and I want you to know that we appreciate that. These are investments into restoring core city services for our residents, and I look forward to being in partnership with you, that our residents have the resources that they need to thrive in this city. The residents of our great city want us to work together in order to do all that we can to improve their lives, their neighborhoods, and make sure that their children have a great place where they don't have to leave, but they can stay. We want them to stay here. We need to continue to work to ensure that we make historic, historic, historic investments in everything we do. Who would have thought that we would have, we would have right now?
A black man.
That we would have AstroBots sending something to the moon from the city of Pittsburgh. Come on, that's a story. We need to continue to work together in order to ensure that we improve the lives of everybody, and that takes all of us. Now, I know my team always say, "Stick to the script," but y'all know me. I'm not going, but anyway. I want to say something because this touched me, and I've never seen this before. Let me be clear. I've been coming here since the day Salaudine was sworn in. I want you to look around at this room and see the new Pittsburgh. See what you see. I've never seen, listen, listen, listen. I've never seen the diversity in this room that I see right now. I've never seen this, and I've always told you, when we work together, we can build a city for all. We can build, but we're tearing down the barriers that kept us separated and show unification by demonstrating that when we come together, there's nothing we can't do. When we talk about saving lives, a 30% reduction in homicide in our city in one year couldn't be possible if it wasn't for the community and our Pittsburgh Bureau of Police working together. And let me tell you something that they don't tell you. We have got so many leads from the community. We could not have built a bridge in record time if it wasn't for council and the mayor's office working together. We couldn't have food policies in place if we didn't work with Councilwoman Gross to ensure that we had enough revenue in our budget to make sure that people were getting the nutrition that they need. Street calming, Barbara Warwick. Barbara Warwick is bullish on street calming projects. Bullish on it. She's in our email box every day talking about street calming projects, and because of that, we did a historic investment. See, that's called working together. Let me be clear, parks and rec, we couldn't move nothing without Councilwoman Strasburg. We couldn't do it. It takes a partnership. It takes us working together to keep our rec hours open longer so our kids have somewhere safe to go play, to go learn, and not be in the street. Like I tell people, if you give them an alternative, let them choose that alternative. When we drive them to it, we must keep the children of this city safe, and the rec centers play a major part. To Bobby Wilson, Councilman Bobby Wilson. We've worked so much on the land bank and being able to get projects and properties to move. To Senator Wayne Fontana and his bill in Harrisburg for us to go up there and advocate for this so that we can move parcels out of the land bank, I want to say thank you. I want to thank you. To public safety, who's more committed to public safety and our police than Anthony I appreciate your partnership. And to President, because once a President, always a President, Teresa Kelsmith. Why don't you rise for a minute, Teresa? And can we give the President, Teresa Kelsmith, a warm applause for her game of service? Come on, come on, come on. Listen, y'all know we've come a long way in two years. I'm talking about the progress we made has been amazing. I've worked for two mayors. I understand how hard it is to get things done, and we couldn't do it without a partnership with council. So I want to say thank you to each one of the council people here today. I appreciate all of you. Now, you know, it's 2024. There's only three words, "Let's go get it."
Thank you, Mayor, for the very encouraging words. Next is the reorganization of City Council, and I need to make appointments to the chairpersons of the various committees, and they will be as follows. The Committee of Finance and Law will be chaired by Councilwoman Erica Strasburger. The Committee on Public Safety and Wellness will be chaired by Councilman Anthony Coghill. The Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure will be chaired by Councilwoman Barbara Warwick. The Committee on Human Resources will be chaired by Councilman Bob Sharland. The Committee on Land Use and Economic Development will be chaired by Councilman Bobby Wilson. The Committee on Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services will be chaired by Council President Teresa Kelsmith. The Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology will be chaired by Councilwoman Deborah Gross. The Committee on Governmental and Educational Affairs will be chaired by Councilman Kahari And lastly, the Committee on Hearings and Policy And lastly, the Committee on Hearings and Policy Committee will be chaired by myself. We also need to reappoint Councilwoman Erica Strasburger to the Carnegie Library Board. Thank you for your service. We now need to elect a President Pro Tem. Is there, what is your pleasure, members? Councilwoman Strasburger?
I would like to nominate Councilman Bobby Wilson.
Second.
And as been seconded, are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, would Assistant City Clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
With that, Councilmember Bobby Wilson is now the President Pro Tem for Pittsburgh City Council. That moves us on to motions and resolutions. I would like to entertain a motion that the rules of the proceedings of council be adopted as the rules of this council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The rules have been adopted. We will now move on to our benediction. The regular meeting on Wednesday? Yeah. We'll now move on to our benediction. I'll make that announcement at the very end. But prior to doing so, because I forgot to do so when I was up here earlier, I just want to congratulate all those who got re-elected to office, and also specifically Bob Sharland. It's been a pleasure to see you work through Councilman Coghill's office and Councilman Kraus's office and seeing the tremendous work that you've put in over the years. Congratulations. I look forward to working alongside you. Kay Mosley. Sorry, Kahari, I promise I won't say that in public.
You can call me Kay Mosley, it's okay.
We've now come full circle, and it's been a great journey. You've been very supportive of me over the years, and I look forward to supporting you in every way I can, and I look forward to serving alongside you. Congratulations.
Let me just state that it's been an honor to serve in this capacity here in this historic moment, and I want to offer my congratulations to all of the councilpersons, those who are new and those who are returning, but especially I want to thank my friend, my brother Kahari Mosley, Councilman Kahari Mosley, and offer my thanks and congratulations to not only you, but the Mosley family as well. So congratulations. I've worked with some of you over the years. I look forward to working with all of you in the future. As we prepare for this benediction, let me just say this one last thing. As I sat here and I listened to the remarks of our mayor, and he shared about the diversity in this room, a lot of work has taken place in this chamber, and so I want to offer my benediction in the spirit of the ancestors that preceded us, those who labored hard, those who put policies in place, those who fought and protested whether they were elected or whether they stood at the podium on behalf of justice. Sometimes it was a minority of voice that was represented, but nonetheless, we are here, and so let us not forget the work that was done before us. Let us continue to press toward the mark that'll make this the most livable city. So let us stand together for this benediction. And now may the grace, the love, and fellowship of a God that is both male and female rest and abide henceforth and forevermore among us all, and together we said, amen.
We'll be done in one second. I have to announce for the record that our next standing.
Everybody, let's give one minute. Give one second, y'all, one second.
I just have to announce for the record that our next both regular meeting will occur this Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. Our standing committee meeting will occur this Wednesday at 1:30 a.m. Everyone is going to be welcomed to the back. We have a reception prepared for all those who are here today. And with that, I need a motion to entertain, I want a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.